Recording in progress.
Ready? All right, I'll call the meeting of this Essex Junction City Council for Wednesday, April 24th, 2024 to order. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
Uh, I don't anticipate that we'll need six E.
Okay, so we'll remove six E. Is there anything else? Hi Amber. I don't see anything else, so I'd entertain a motion to amend the agenda as proposed.
So moved.
Marcus moves.
Second.
Andrew seconds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Public to be heard. It's the portion of the city council meeting when members of the public in the room and on Zoom can bring comments or concerns to the city council. I don't see, is there anyone in the room that has anything they'd like to share? There's no one in the room. Go to Zoom.
Raise this on line.
Raise it. It is your turn. If you'd like to join us.
Thank you. I have two quick things. The first is, um, it was interesting to see the election results and how the bulk by like, I don't know, 70% of people voted early or beforehand rather than at the polls. With all the construction that's going to be happening, I just would like to make sure that someone remembers amongst all the millions of things you need to remember, that there isn't a ballot box somewhere with the mail being totally dejoyed. We can't count on mailing anything. And having a place that we know that is safe to drop our ballots would be comforting as we head into another fallacy season. So, thank you. And then the second thing very quickly, and I know that you're going to talk about it soon. Andrew, thank you for all the work that you've done. I haven't always agreed with all of your ideas and choices regarding Essex Junction, but it does not in any way affect how remarkable you have been in all the work that you've done. So I just wanted to thank you and let you know that it is appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I got to start it.
Well, thank you for the second comment, and I think there's.
Yep.
Regina, do you have any information on a ballot drop box?
Yep, so we have a, a brand new fancy looking ballot box. It's, um, right outside of the entrance to the teen center because during construction, the city offices will be over in that direction. So, um, yeah, it's, uh, exciting that somebody can ask for something and poof, it's there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to bring a comment or concern to the board? Not seeing any hands up. So we will move on to five A. We will consider a resolution of appreciation for Andrew Brown. There is a resolution to read. And we're gonna ask radio personality Marcus Cerner. Who joined as special person tonight to read that resolution.
Why, thank you.
I know.
He like adds a little extra in there.
Okay.
Nice little something.
Let me see if I can get through this. Whereas Andrew Brown was elected to Village of Essex Junction Board of Trustees in 2012. And whereas Andrew with the end of his term as a city councillor on, on April 24th, 2024, concluding 12 years of dedicated service and leadership to the village and city of Essex Junction. And whereas during that time, Andrew held the role of president of the Essex Junction Board of Trustees from April 2019 to June 2022. And whereas during that time, Andrew held the role of president of the city council from July 2022 to April 2023. And whereas Andrew held the role of chair of the capital review committee from July 2012 to August 2019. And whereas Andrew helped guide the Essex Junction Board of Trustees and Essex Town Select Board through a sustained governance change effort that resulted in the establishment of the city of Essex Junction as a fully independent municipal government. And whereas Andrew's steady, energetic and forward-thinking leadership guided his fellow board members through the process of drafting a municipal charter for the independent city of Essex Junction within the remarkable brief time of four months in 2021, in time for voter approval in November and presentation to the Vermont legislator legislature at the start of the 2022 legislative session. And whereas Andrew's commitment to inclusivity and democratic participation inspired him to lead the transition to Australian balloting for Essex Junction's annual meeting. And whereas Andrew led the Essex Junction Board of Trustees and the city of Essex Junction City Council through COVID. And whereas Andrew led the hiring of the first city municipal manager and resolved that the city council, on behalf of the staff and citizens of the city of Essex Junction, hereby extend our most sincere appreciation to Andrew for his commitment and dedicated years of service to the residents of Essex Junction adopted this day, the 24th day of April 2024, by the Essex Junction City Council.
I'll second that resolution.
Any discussion?
We all get a point of privilege.
Yes, please go for it.
All right. Andrew, I just want to say thank you. We ran together 12 years ago and got elected together. And I have never been prouder of serving with someone. We started out not knowing what we were doing and you have been an outstanding leader, led us through the most challenging part of our entire existence as a community and led us through to a success. And, um, you have, you earned our confidence, our gratitude and, um, our pride. So thank you so much. I'm so glad to serve with you. I'm so glad to be your friend. And I hope that you are not going anywhere because we want you to, we want you to stay around and of course, we want you to have a personal life. You've become a trusted friend and leader and we're so proud of you and very, very grateful. Thank you so much for your service. We'll miss you.
Amber, I can't see you. Um, there's someone else is spotlight there, but did you have anything you wanted to share?
Sure. Andrew's been around, huh? Say the least. Uh, you know, I'll, I'll keep it short. I just want to say thank you. You've helped me a lot in, in my own journey over the past few years and I hope this gives you an opportunity to, to spend some time with the fam. And, um, as I said to George and to Dan, uh, retirement can only be short, so that's okay. You can always come back.
Let me just say that, um, again, as a resident of the city of Essex Junction before taking this particular role, I appreciated your leadership on the Board of Trustees and the city council. It meant a lot to me to not only be able to speak to you, whether it was via email or otherwise, you were always welcoming of comments, questions, and you were always even-handed and, um, steady with your, with your views. And I appreciated that because it really showed, and I think it inspired me to, again, take on this particular role because I could see the difference that was being made and how I think best present oneself when doing that. So, thank you for all the work and the heart and the slings and arrows that you've taken over the years. But, um, again, as we leave this meeting tonight and go back outside and we see our city, the reason this city is here is because of your participation. And so, thank you.
Thank you. It's all very hard to top, but, um, I just echo everything that's been said. I feel fortunate to have joined the board with you on it and as president. It was a much different experience than I thought. Um, it was very much a roller coaster. Still feel sort of like we're on one a little bit, um, but certainly those merger separation years were, were rough and you kept it very smooth. You kept it very easy for us to participate. Um, it's very steady. Having an opportunity to be, uh, vice president with you, um, was a great learning opportunity. I still consistently wonder what you would do in every situation and really appreciate your insight and your thoughtfulness and your ability to just get to the point and really find the nugget in what we're trying to do. I know you'll be back to argue for some structural changes. Perhaps some building heights, perhaps some other things. There's some work not yet done, I think, in your head and I don't disagree with you. I hope you stay involved. Um, I imagine many of us will make sure you stay involved somewhere. She will. We'll miss you. Yeah. All right. We have anything for Andrew? We have.
We have flowers. We have from Public Works Essex Junction t-shirt.
No.
If that's what it takes, you have to leave.
And in recognition of 12 years of service.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So, yeah. I think it's the least that we can do.
And the cookies. That are all mine.
Cookies were, were.
Yes.
Cookies were a happy accident, I think. So all those in favor of the resolution of the, uh, motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Andrew. We'll stop embarrassing you for a good 10 minutes. We'll be back though. Maybe we can get a picture later.
Well, that would be nice.
All right. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I might save it. I'll, I might save it for after everything at the.
At the end, okay.
Yeah.
No problem. Fair enough.
My head will be in a better place without.
Understood. Okay. Moving on to six A, discussion and consideration of city council meeting disruptions and meeting policy.
Okay, um, so, uh, staff has been doing, um, a bit of research on this topic. And, um, Ashley is on vacation, just so folks know, so, um, I will kind of quickly go through this, but for the most part, you've got kind of a lot of information in your packet, um, about, um, how, uh, to sort of handle this, disruptive speech, hate speech, um, versus the protection of First Amendment rights, um, and how to appropriately, handle this. So I think, um, at the top of page two in the memo, is just kind of a good way to think about this. And it's actually the similar, um, uh, content-based thinking that the planning commission has been thinking about with how they manage sign regulations because it's essentially the same, same concept. So time, place and manner restrictions are okay. If there is disruptive speech, um, interrupting, or interrupting commentary regardless of what the person is talking about, that, um, is a time, place and manner restriction and you can, you can limit that. An outburst can be muted if it's again disrupting the order. And really again, sort of in this, in this realm of disorderly speech, um, can be, uh, restricted. However, if you are doing this only based on the content of what that individual is talking about, like if it's happening at an appropriate time throughout the meeting, um, but the, the content is hateful toward one group, that is not, uh, something that can be restricted. So, um, further down in this memo, there are, um, considering your current meeting policy, and statement that we have had at the beginning of the meetings. We've got some very specific changes, uh, recommended in here to, um, really just ensure that we are appropriately protecting the First Amendment, um, speech rights. But then there's a kind of a lot more in this, um, memo, um, and some of the other resources because VLCT has just, I mean, I think just the last couple of weeks in March, um, really put out a new policy and procedure and guidance document for this. And just in terms of what some other folks, uh, what, uh, Winuski has been doing, what Burlington has been doing to try to, address the Zoom bomber concept of things. Burlington, uh, requires registration, um, before you get into the meeting. I, at this point, at least for me, am not recommending that. That feels really, um, a lot administratively, but not so much that. It's really, it's hard to get to be a part of the meeting remotely. Um, and, uh, I just, I'm not sure that we need to take that step yet. We have already put in place, um, a waiting room now in the Zoom meeting. And we do have it in the FY25 budget to move to, um, webinar function if we need that as well. Let me just see what else I want to point out here. Um.
Yeah. Question about clarity. And not because of the fact that I want to second guess any previous decisions, I agree with what we've done. But because it's a clear example, I want to just use it as an example. So in the previous instances, the most recent couple of instances, instances, the person who has come on, has come on during Public to be Heard at the front of the meeting, which is open to any subject. Therefore, we should not have shut them off. Again, I'm not second guessing our decision. I think we did the right thing at the time, knowing what we know. Looking at what we've got in this packet though, and understanding this a little bit deeper, my understanding now is we had to, at the time, we should have just let it go.
We have a nuanced follow-up question though.
Yes, and I'll, um, give a little bit of information just in terms of a counterbalance to that, that we did hear from the anti-defamation leak.
Yeah.
So there, um, what they told us about is that from their perspective, they've never seen in terms of public outcry against a board for shutting somebody down. And this is just perception, public perception. It doesn't mean that's legal or not legal. Their perspective just is, we've never seen, uh, pushback against that happening. They have seen pushback against boards that let, um, speech like this carry too long. So, I mean, I think in reality, there, there is a balance and I think there's a component of this that it's still, the council meetings are still the meetings of this body. They are intended for you to cover things that are within your purview. So I, and I, we can still get further clarity on this, but I do think there's still a window where if somebody is speaking to you about something that the council would never have any authority or any realm of possibility of doing something about, even if that's brought forward to you under Public to be Heard, I think you're, I think, and again, we'll clarify this, but I think you've got some room to, shut that down.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to see, I'd love that clarity because that's what I've been going over. We talked about earlier and and then so what, even to the point of having a script. So it's handled the same way every time. It's laid out as how we're going to handle it. It's not just for hateful speech, right? If we're trying to get through a meeting and someone joins the meeting and they want to talk about, I don't know, how their their leaf breaking experience from this past fall. It's a dumb example, but it's supposed to be, you know, not related to anything that we have a way to do that and if we're consistent. So that's, but I think that that might be a nuance that we can use to try to mitigate some of this.
Yeah, I guess I wanna, I wanna make sure that I'm completely, that I completely understand the problem before I get into the solutions. And look, the First Amendment is a wonderful thing. But it can be complex. It's nuanced. It's got a lot of pieces, obviously. Just look at the research that's in the back. And for some, it can be very inconvenient. But I want to, I want to make sure that again, because if we're talking about solutions or we're talking about restructuring the meanings of the way that we handle public deter, what is our ultimate goal? Is it really just to cut down on this? Is it? Cause I don't, I think that that is what's brought us here. I think that's the crux of it. I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear. Cause I, I agree with you. We have to be able to conduct business. We also need to be able to hear concerns from the public about other issues or questions about what's happening in the community. But I have seen and witnessed, like the city of Burlington in the last couple of years with outcry from the public coming before the city council to mandate the city council make statements about the war overseas. That is, when the public is asking the body to take such, that kind of action, while it doesn't feel like that's our responsibility, I wonder if.
So there's weird. I, I would say that if, if the community is coming with a specific attitude, we as a community make a statement and we're the body that represents that community, I, I think that's, I would think that would be germane, at least for the conversation. I think the ultimate goal is to make sure that people can come and have a voice into issues that are issue, things that are issues for them, for their neighbors that we happen to be talking about this evening or not, you know? That said, I think this is a terrible place and model. These meetings are a terrible way to get public input. So I think, you know, I, I love the idea of revisiting our meeting policy, but I also want to be really intentional, as we've talked about before, to continue to find new ways and better ways to actually engage because this isn't really a great model. This isn't, isn't a great, you know, one time every, you know, twice a month with all these other things going on, it's not a great place to converse. And I would love to spend a lot of, as much time as possible brainstorming with people on how to improve that. But I think keeping it open first and foremost, right?
Yeah.
And then, um, but, you know, we've also got, I mean, as an aside, one of the things I thought about, one of the examples I thought about, what you were saying is, you know, we've had some marathon meetings. And some of that is just because of the nature of where we are. But, um, I think if we have a time, if we in writing have a time in our meeting policy and a method to waive it where we can say, well, there's only four or five people and this is a complex topic. Do we agree as a board that we can increase that to whatever? Um, I think that'd be useful. But I think, yeah, you know, I don't think we have a lot of issues with people talking at length about topics that don't matter to us. I think it's mostly around making sure that we have a space for people and a community where this just isn't welcome and, and possible to to spew that kind of hate. Hi, Amber. Sorry.
No worries. Um, I was just gonna, uh, speak to the question that was asked and trying to get clarification. I do think that the language in the VLCT procedure is clear about the, is about the procedure and that this is a, this is a public meeting about what, uh, topics this council can basically control. Um, and so that is lacking from our current procedure. So I think connecting the dots, if that, if we were to shift to the language that's in the VLCT model, I think that does allow us the ability to shut down that speech. Not on the basis of the type of speech, but on the fact that it's not relevant to the matter that's being addressed in front of the council. But currently, we don't have that language. So I think that goes, it goes more to the, the question about, are we going to try to revise our model percy, our procedure to align with VLCT or what are we doing there? And I, I personally would like to see us just shift to the VLCT model and use that procedure with maybe if there's some specific city stuff out of the current procedure, molding that into it.
Do you want to stop coming? Who hasn't spoken?
I would just want to be very sure that we maintain a space probably where it is now, Public to be Heard, where if someone speaks on something that is not on the agenda and we might not think at the outset that it's relevant to city council, but they might get around to it by the time they're done talking. I, I don't want to shut down the random resident who comes in with a problem or an idea or a concern. So that has to be, that has to stay in there.
Yeah, and that becomes an issue of, you know, how is it used by the board, right? And.
You've all hit the major points.
Okay.
When I've seen contentious meetings at the Burlington City Council, I have seen a lot of people that I've seen them stick to their time limit very strictly. Like your time is up. I think they might even have that red, yellow, green thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And I've seen the most recent city council president be extremely even-handed about, you know, thank you for your comments. Your time is up next. And each different person has a different level of vitriol. But they're given two minutes to express that vitriol. And as much as we don't like it. And as much as we don't like it, and having sat through many meetings like that in previous experiences in our very community, we still have to allow it to happen.
Yep. I mean, in my mind, I think the only time we would want to shut it down is if it becomes just, we've had examples of it.
Right.
Um, and even then, just so it's said out loud, even then, we may be faced with a situation that that needs to go on for two minutes. And I just want to say that out loud, so the community understands what we have in this research we're looking at. You know, we may just plain need to let that go for two minutes. And two minutes, that's not from nowhere. That's sort of a recommendation generally for boards like this. I think, uh, we can come up with our own time, but it has to be reasonable. And like I said, if we have in the VLCT policy, I think Amber referenced, right? There's a way to extend that. There's a whole process out there.
I would add to that, once our meetings are on YouTube, that we work with town meeting television to have information in the beginning of each meeting that says, warning, there is language that may be considered objectionals, objectionable, starting at this timestamp.
That was going to be a specific ask.
Yeah.
So we have these, there's, I mean, Marcus, do you have anything else?
Yeah, so I, I think for me, I'm still, so let me, let me ask this question first is around, around the fact that are we, is there thought around the table that we are going to be making some new meeting policy at this meeting? Okay, so we're just discussing these options. Okay. So I'll throw out a couple of things and observations that I've noticed. Again, I have observed the Burlington City Council as well. Yesterday, as I watched the Colchester have their meeting, they don't even have a hybrid option. You, they stream it, but they do, but if you want to participate, you have to be in person. I, to me, that feels a little extreme, like I don't necessarily want to go to that. But I think for us to have this discussion, we have to talk about all the potential options, because again, in my reading of, of what's in the packet, a lot of this has to do with reasonable restriction. So what do we think is reasonable restrictions? Cause I have seen communities have a two minute. I've seen communities have three minutes. What is reasonable for us in order to allow for the community to participate, share their thoughts, but um, not feel as though they're being excluded from the conversation. So I, I think that there's a lot to this and there was a portion of me at one point, and because we're not deciding on it tonight, even before this discussion, I thought maybe our future city councillor might need to participate in this conversation, because we're talking about something that is going, that he's gonna have to be a part of later, but we're not deciding that tonight, so. Um, but anyway, so those are some things that I'm thinking about, because I, I'm still not quite convinced that Robert's rules don't work. I think that you can still work within Robert's rules if you want and have, again, seizure restriction, you can put those things in there to define what that looks like and still use uh, you know, that common apparatus. But anyway, that's.
Yeah, just to clarify, the goal tonight is to go through these, for instance, go through these four recommendations. Yeah, so that for, you know, staff can come back with, with what we've asked them to do with the rebut, if it, if the recommendation is that we, we ask them to incorporate what, some of what we have already with the new model that VLCT is, then they would, they would come back at a future meeting with the, the draft for, injured.
My only caution about going too firmly with Robert's Rules of Order um, is a good parliamentarian can't really just throw that for a loop and have a meeting going. So especially if the full body is not up to speed in all of the intricacies of Robert's Rules of Order. With that said, one of the things you can of course do is the ability to call the question, see whether it remains the topic at hand. And so if the public to be confident, the public to be heard courses of the meeting are at least defined well enough as to what the topic is, then the president can say whether or not that topic is remains the topic at hands and then limit at that point in time.
Yeah, I read through the VLCT example and I'm kind of with Amber. I think it'd be interesting to see how those two would go together. Um, our current model, you know, portions of what we have in the city. And I think Ashley did a pretty good job of um, kind of pointing out some, some areas. So, I mean, I'd be curious to see what, what came back. Um, I don't know, you know, timeframe wise, I think of the worst case scenario in my head, because that's kind of what got us here. So how long do I want to listen to that? And how difficult is it for whoever's sitting here to say? Um, you know, what, what does that look like? Um, oh, you know, you're going to talk about something that's not that. Keep going. Um, if, then you have to deal with the third person who's speaking, who goes off on a tangent like, like we've seen. And the ability to shut them at two minutes. So, you know, once it, we'd have to have a pretty firm way of dealing with that. It doesn't. Well, for lack of a better phrase, ruin the flow of the meeting and ruin the flow of the person that's trying to share their thoughts, you know, and really discourage participation. But um, but like I said earlier, I think if we do a lot of this to, to put these restrictions in place, they will be restrictions. And we'll have to work harder to make sure we're engaged outside or we're making ourselves available ones or twos. I've also often wondered if there were two of us that showed up, because there can't be three, if there were two of us, of us that showed up at six sometimes for the specific purpose of having conversations with members of the community informally. And then reporting that back to the city council at a later date, so that it wasn't a meeting. There weren't the restrictions in place about order and flow and all of those things. That's just an example, like what are the, but that's a different conversation.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying. But for me, this conversation is completely different from the topic of public participation in general. This is, for me, is meeting management and management of inappropriate language. I don't think that the decisions we make around these policies will change the participation in our meetings. People will still come, depending on the topic. And we will still have small audiences until there's a topic that really gets people's attention and then we'll have large audiences. So I just don't know that there are things that we need to consider together this.
Yep.
Yep, Amber.
Yeah. So my, my suggestion would be as to the reasonable timeframe portion, maybe the way to look at this is if we can have Ashley take a stab at, at consolidating the two, merging the two documents and maybe giving us some research slash recommendations from what other folks are doing. Um, we, I do, I mean, we do know that Burlington has a time limit. Um, I, I think theirs does change, but I'm not entirely sure. It's between two and three minutes. Um, but there's probably other municipalities that also recognize a time limit. Um, and so maybe just having an idea presented to us on here's what South Burlington does, here's what Burlington does, here's what Colchester does. And then that meeting where we discuss it, we can actually decide where we're gonna, what we're gonna plug into that, that blank space.
The idea that, um, what I'm not sure that registration, I think is, is necessarily a difficult thing for the public. I think it's a step. But I do know of municipalities that are using that particular step. Um, the other thing that I'll say is one of the things that we have also allowed is people to participate without being seen. And I wonder if, again, if they have to show themselves to participate. If that would help reduce some of the nonsense.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be curious. This is something that we talk about a lot in, in our regular work um, with students. And I think I'd be curious if we could do that. I kind of think they say you could participate electronically, but that, you know, so that would mean by phone and a person on the phone would not have to, you know, wouldn't be able to show themselves. So I don't know that we could require this, this VLCT policy also says they have to name themselves accurately and fully in the in the where possible. It's not possible on a phone, but in Zoom it is. We, we don't really enforce that. But yeah, I don't know that it'd be possible to, to mandate that we could ask.
Yeah, I think you're right about that. It is, it's also, I should say, S fifty five is being, happening right now, making some changes to um, open meeting law, but I do believe that you've got to allow people to participate via telephone. And so that would essentially be prohibiting that.
Be it. Okay, so I want to make sure that like, because if you say via telephone, that's still through Zoom. I assume that that's the way the language is going to be allowed, because if the language says by telephone, then that's a whole different ball of wax versus they can connect to the Zoom via telephone.
You can.
Which I know you can technologically, but again, I'll just put the question out there. I wonder if it's a reasonable restriction to say that we have to be able to see, we have to be able to, we have to know who the person is. And we have to visually see the person in order to, because they also have other methods by which they can still communicate. It's not as though we're cutting them off.
Yeah, but you can make an audio phone call into the Zoom meeting without the possibility of having video with a, with a regular phone. So there's no way to, so just clarifying that.
But we don't have to unmute that particular individual either.
I think we do. If it's public to be heard, they get a chance to speak. We can't not unmute them. That's the whole point. I mean, not to, not to try to correct you, but we'd have to let them have an opportunity to have two minutes, it sounds like, if they so chose. And we have to take their word for it, just like we're taking their word for it. You know, even for people we don't know personally, we don't recognize, even if they show themselves, we're taking their word for who they are. Um, and we're not taking ID when they come into the building. So if we don't know them. And, you know, we've had plenty of meetings too, where we ask people to sign in and they don't sign in. We're not kicking them out. Um, so I don't, you know, all of that, I don't know that we could not have someone participate on Zoom if we're not checking IDs at the door, verifying against the registration that they refuse, asking them to leave. Um, just thinking this through out loud, so um, but I get your point. I've often thought it would be nice to have them have to turn on the camera.
I just think of um, my mom, for instance, if she wanted to participate in this meeting, uh, the hands do so virtually, the computer she has that does not have a camera. So for her, that she would then be prohibited from being able to participate. And I assume she's not the only person that doesn't have a camera to be able to participate.
No, but I think it comes back to that, that issue of what what, what is, what covers the, what works for the most people necessarily, not this, because there was a time that you had to participate in this meeting in person. That changed because of COVID and technology. But that wasn't a problem back then. And I would say.
Wasn't a, wasn't a problem before COVID, you mean?
Wasn't a problem before COVID by, you know, making, by making people have to show up at a meeting in person in order to have their opinions heard.
I guess I would.
Live in person.
I would differ with you that it wasn't a problem for those who didn't have a problem with it. It wasn't a problem legally.
Correct.
It wasn't a problem legally, but it was a huge problem from a participation and inclusion point of view, you know, inclusion with the, with the lowercase i. I mean, to be clear. Um, you know, so yeah, I think it was, it's a huge barrier. Um, even, even now, I think there's, there's barriers that you have to have the technology to, not only do you have to come down here, but then you have to have minimum hundreds of dollars for the stuff to, to be able to participate, so.
Okay, one last thing to, to Elaine's point earlier around how um, this is that tug and pull between uh, meeting management versus participation. I think it's hard to have a clean conversation with only thinking about one piece and without the intersection between those two things. Um, and so for your future meetings, maybe just have that be the overall conversation or yeah, concept there is, how can we have the meetings that we want to have while also keeping in mind to maintain the participation that we have by reason? Because yes, before, before COVID, the audience we currently have would be the extent as to the audience that we would have in meetings.
Yeah.
Um, which would mean that our public participation um, did suffer significant.
Definitely not saying that's the preferred way to go, but.
It was not uncommon to have the room be empty, except for those of us at the table.
Yeah. I had one more thing that I noticed is, I, I think it's missing from the documentation that we have in the packet and this conversation. Um, and I'm not sure what to do about it is I'm reading a lot about like civility, decorum and behavior. Where is our, what are, where is the line on swearing? Because we've also, seriously, before we've had the hate speech issues we've had, we've had occasional residents call in and swear a blue streak. And we're like, you're done. And we cut them off. But it doesn't sound like we can cut them off anymore.
The packet does address some of that.
Okay.
In the, in the reading that I saw, we have to allow an amount, but there, it can be a limit on the amount. So again, it's big, a little gray, and it's a judgment call. So I won't do it now, but if I just use one expletive to emphasize a point.
That's different.
That's different than if I come in and I'm just F this, F that, F this, F that. Oh.
Well, I mean, as I read it, we'd have to let them go for X time period minimum that is in our policy, or that was stated at the beginning of the meeting and voted on by the board. So that's how I, that's how I've been just, that's my understanding. So.
Going forward, we need to be, we need to say like, this includes swearing.
And I like the part about the VLCT's short, uh, short version for having in the room and for having available and potentially figuring out a way to, I'm just gonna drag it out, become competitive, but setting a standard at the beginning of the meetings, you know, reading, reading something, I think at the last portion of select word merger, separation, joint meetings that we had, Andy McReed.
Yeah. Well, you know, when I go.
Reading, just letting people, no, sorry, just letting people know how it's gonna work, right? Like what the expectations.
When I go to a ballgame, there's a sign on the gym, on the gym wall, let the coaches coach, let the kids play. Like, rules are okay to have on the wall. And in fact, some people are too nervous to ask about them. And some people don't check the website beforehand, or they don't read the form or whatever. Put them on the wall. I would add to that also, that, that, that little extra thing that VLCT created for attendees, say like, mind your language. Please don't swear. Like, we could put that in there, you know?
All right, so you have four recommendations in the packet. I do have one, I, I would say let's do two, three and four. I would say one, two, but I'm wondering Regina, if we need to, if we're doing three and four.
Yeah.
Do we need to do one?
Yeah, I think we can. It sounds like we want to move forward with um, looking at VLCT's um, policy, take a look at our existing policy, try to merge the two. And I think in that editing process, we can be just, just be assured to also address the concern from the city attorney on that, number one.
And I, I don't think we need a motion for that, right?
No, this is, we'll just um, work on that. There was, uh, just so you know, Raj, Harlan's hand was up earlier. It's not anymore, but.
And Regina, do you have anything else that you, any other thoughts based on this conversation or anything else you've thought of that you want to add to this?
I don't think so, not at this time.
Um, all right, we'll take comment on this from anyone who's in the room to start. Not seeing any hands in the room. Uh, anyone online? Uh, Harlan, I, I do know, we saw your hand up earlier. I don't know if your question was answered or your comment was covered.
Um, some of it was covered and I'll confess, I didn't completely read um, through the packet, so I'm not exactly sure what was warranted out there. I had brought this up during um, merger conversations when we had um, several residents um, telling the board what they should do, both on our budget and other things. And I believe Robert's rules only allows residents to speak in these meetings. Um, and that anybody outside of being a resident would need to ask permission to speak within the meetings. And I know on the public open law, the answer that I got back then was we would still like to hear comments from people about our community, which I get. So this is, I mean, this is a tough one that you guys are up against. we would still like to hear comments from people about our community, which I get. So this is, I mean, this is a tough one that you guys are up against. But the one thing that I did want to mention, you guys were trying to figure out how to put the rules, whether it's on our website or so on and so forth. Maybe the rules as we're waiting to get into the meeting on Zoom could be a scrolling screen. And maybe that scrolling screen just before a public comment could be brought up on the Zoom screens again with how we should have cordial divorce conversations. And just try to reiterate that, but I'll probably read through the packet. And if I've got any more, you guys will get an email.
Is there anyone else online that has a comment or question about this topic? Use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. I'm not seeing anyone. So bring it back to the board. We don't need a motion for this. Everybody comfortable with where we're at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Regina and Ashley for doing a pretty thorough dive to begin with and to get us to this point.
You're welcome. I will mostly, that's Ashley, so I will pass it on.
Please.
All right. Discussion of budget process and improvements. Six B.
Okay, uh, so as we are so close to the existing budget passing, um, it can be a good time to just sort of debrief and think about the process and any improvements that you might want to discuss and think about. Um, sorry, I'm just trying to get to that memo.
This page thirty-eight.
So just so folks are aware, on the staff side, we will be looking at a few different things. One, uh, we will have the strategic plan in place that will hopefully help us start to put some sort of guideposts around, um, this work and goal setting for the budget season going forward. I do think that's, uh, gonna be a work in progress, really probably for a number of years to see how that kind of all flows and works together. And how we have the right metrics to know if we are achieving the goals that we set out or not. But I think it will at least be a good starting place for us this year. We also are right now in association negotiations that will set the contract for the next three years. So that will essentially be in place and that will, won't be an unknown, like it was an unknown going into this, uh, the FY twenty-five budget. We also, um, thanks to Andrew's suggestion, we'll be looking into, uh, performance budgeting. There was a, um, good short description of what that looks like that I included in the packet just for folks' information. So those are sort of the things and the improvements that we're thinking about from our end anyway, um, that can hopefully help help figure things out, but wanted to give counsel an opportunity to talk about.
Great. Who would like to kick us off?
I can do it.
Go for it.
Can we start earlier? Let, let, so let me clear.
This is the earliest we've ever started.
Two weeks ago.
Amber, if we could have started before we voted on the budget, I think Amber would have been really happy.
No, I, I ask. I say that from this, from, from this perspective. Again, as I went through the budget myself, having to go through it line by line, really kind of nickel and dime some things. But the feedback I got from the public, let alone my own questions that started to pop up, really had more to do with structure and or policy or some, some other underpinnings that affect cost and revenue. And by the time we're into the budget, the discussion like that we just had, it almost seems too late. So being able to deep dive with department heads on departments and understand better about that functionality, I think would really help inform the public better about the work that's being done. And I know we're having department head meetings. But if, if they're coming to the discussion with the intent that what we're doing is we're setting the stage for the upcoming budget discussion versus we're just checking in with I think it's a different tone and it's a different type of discussion that we've done to, to understand. All right. For instance, if we have an upcoming discussion on GRP or the ways, whatever, we did set some metrics in this last discussion, or they were set some by the department heads. So when we have that check in, I would hope that we talk about where those metrics might already look be. And then do some other deep diving into those, into those pieces of the puzzle. So that when we get to the budget discussion, hopefully the, the community feels more informed about what these departments are doing, how they're doing it. So that again, when we come into that discussion, we can get right to the meat of the matter, understand impact, just focus on the impacts of adjusting that budget.
So I will say, um, some boards have a retreat more around this time of year, like in the, you know, April, May, June timeframe. And that's really what's bringing in the strategic plan, goal setting concept, and you're getting that kind of work done collectively then. So it helps inform the budget process that happens next. And so I think when we can get into that, like well-run cycle of those two things happening, um, that should, should really help get at what you're talking about.
Amber.
I agree. I was thinking the same thing, you know, at least for now, when we haven't, when we haven't gotten that part, the retreat and all that stuff in, um, in line is that first thing is that I think we as a city council need to do a better job of saying to staff, department heads, this is what we want to see. If we don't want to present a budget to the city residents that's more than five percent, then say it. Say it today. So that puts it out there for everyone. And in regards to the department head discussions, the way I kind of see that is, yeah, we get, we, we, I absolutely love the fact that everyone's coming in and, and telling us what's going on and what they're looking for in the future and stuff from a department head perspective. I'd like to see that be a longer conversation where we're really, the focus is, I, I mean, I'll use, I'll use Chelsea's group as an example, not only because I see Chelsea's on here, but we know that PFAS and stuff, that there are potential rules and regulations that are coming down. What is the implication of that on a, from a budgetary perspective? You know, what does the fire chief see as things that are coming up in a year from now that are going to be significant from a budget perspective? So more focusing on the budget component than overall what's happening. And I think we have kind of gone through all of the department heads. And maybe the first part of that discussion can be like, what have you guys done in the last, in the last six months? And what is, what's your goals in the future? But now let's focus for another half an hour on the budget perspective. My last comment is that I want to talk about the positives. I think we did, I think looking at the turnout that we got for the community brunch and budget discussion was great compared to what we got for the annual meeting. And so my suggestion would be we continue doing something to that effect, whether it's brunch, lunch, dinner, whatever it happens to be. And the timeframe works, it allowed folks, we got all, we got quite a few questions at that January meeting and really none at the annual meeting. So I do, I do want to see that we continue to do that. And with that, I'll peace out.
And it's great possible place your.
What's the old broker?
Angela is not on this one. Elaine, do you want to?
I have a list.
I didn't, okay.
First of all, I agree 100% with Amber. We need to set an expectation at the council level or what's allowable in terms of increases. And I would say it should be a, an expectation that department heads should always prepare a level funded budget, just in case. And then whatever expectation we have, because that's where we went this year. It seems, I've seen it happen so many times. So maybe they should start with a level and then go to where our target is. But we need to be saying to the community, we hear you and we're going to try to keep this budget increase to a certain level because we don't want it to get worse, right? So understanding that it's very difficult to hold to a certain percentage, but it's easier to set a cap and try to meet it than it is to not have a cap and then try to meet, impose one, as we've learned this year. A practice that I've seen at the legislature with state departments that I think is, might be useful for us is, um, let us, members of the appropriations committee of the House are assigned an agency. And they get the binder with all the numbers. And then that, that house member sits down with the secretary and they go through the budget and that house member is responsible for knowing that budget, maybe not inside and out, but knowing it really deeply. And then they can bring that information back to the committee and have more educated conversations about the budgets. So perhaps that could be something we as a council could do. We each are assigned a particular department. We do a deep, deep dive. We become conversant with that budget. And then we bring that to the table for the budget discussions. Um, that might be really useful. And that way, we're not all burdened needing to know everything about every department. We can rely on each other a little bit better for that. That, but in a similar vein though, I would love to have group conversations about a particular department, one at a time. Like Regina has introduced, like a department head comes and talks to us just to get to know the department. We could do that and do a deeper dive into the budget at, you know, in the same kind of way. So another possibility. I love the idea of the board retreat concept. And when, whenever we get our strategic planning report that we could start doing that, I think that would be wonderful. I don't know if it's possible, it might just be a timeline thing, but having the enterprise fund figures alongside the budget figures so that we can have a full understanding of what we are in for in terms of increases, knowing what the utilities are going to be. I know that it's, you know, they're two separate, not separate sets of books, but they're two separate entities and it's hard to do one, do them together. But if we could stretch the timeline out, perhaps our conversations could be better informed by having both sets of numbers. Because that would be really helpful to me. Because if we're keeping our budget percentage increased low, but water rates are going up and stormwater is going up, like it doesn't really matter because it's just a different bill, different piece of paper. And the last thing I want to suggest is, um, it's just something that has been in the Essex Governance Group report that I keep talking about for 10 years now, neighborhood conversations. We don't, we're not, we haven't started talking about neighborhood assemblies, which someday I hope we really do. But perhaps if we could find, um, a few residents in different neighborhoods that would be willing to host their neighbors and have one or two city councillors show up and have a local neighborhood conversation about the budget. And then that those councillors report back to the group. Like I went to Fairview and this is what they said. And I went to Indian Acres and this is what they said, and Wickham Farm area. Can we find some residents who would be willing to, I don't know, hold a barbecue or a potluck or not even, just have some lemonade and be in the backyard or in the living room and we hear from them in their neighborhood so they don't have to come to a meeting. And they can be in their on their, on their turf, hearing, we're hearing from them on their turf as opposed to making them come to us. Not that it's turf, but you know. That's my list.
I have no disagreements with anything that's been said so far. Um, at a, at a more micro level, thank you for having the article in there Regina. That's where I would love to see. Go. At the more macro level, uh, this is basically one of the biggest reasons why I, I think it's so hard last year to have there be a strategic planning effort. At the, at this level, the budget needs to drive or allow for the services that are provided, which should then be led by what the long-term vision is for the community. And so if the community wants certain things, we should be able to know how the budget is helping or hindering that. While at the same time, making sure that the decisions that happen here don't harm then those long-term visions and that long-term goal. So, uh, hopefully then helping to inform the, you know, level fund versus five percent. And then what would those impacts be to that long-term plan? That way, also hopefully getting out of the reactionary mentality that I know personally I can fall into around budgeting of, but we can't have a number higher than this, except that's what actually allows for the community to get what the community said. Having that information, I think, can help to paint a more holistic and.
Let me type. So I'm not, I'm just going through my list and trying to isolate what hasn't been said. So agreeing generally around with everybody. I mentioned this before, I think we need to figure out a way to provide budget information in planning. We need, and I thought the videos, um, that were done, that very few people probably saw, but Ashley sitting with department heads were sort of along that thing. So I think reading a budget, I've been at this five years, it's really intimidating and it's really difficult to get through, especially when you're considering their enterprise budgets or all these other things. And I think when we are able to sit down with residents and kind of walk them through it, we're able to answer questions at the community breakfast, then there's clarity. And so I think whether, how that happens, I don't know. I'm not going to prescribe how that happens, but I think we need to be able to, to find a way to communicate this in narrative form.
Or graphic form.
Or, and, and, you know.
Find someone who knows how to tell stories with infographic.
Right.
Really important.
Yep. And so what else was not mentioned? Um, you mentioned Elaine, department head should prepare a level funded budget. And I wrote down after you said that, because it matched something above, that will allow for the production of scenarios that we can consider.
Yeah.
Because we are going to be and have been put in to make decisions, you know, this scenario versus that scenario. So not, you know, and I think that there also needs to be a communication early and often that not every department will be treated the same way. We're going to ask for things, we're going to set goals, but we're also going to have to understand that based on the strategic plan, based on the pressures that one portion of our city might be facing, based on some random, you know, we might, we might have a, a, a regulation come down on PFAS that puts pressure on the budget in an unpredictable way. And that might be in another department, doesn't get X this year. You know, it's not always going to be even handed. There will be differences in how we, and that, I think we saw some of that based on how we made our request at the particular department this year. And so yes, to the early, yes, to the conversation starting sooner. But I think for, for me, what hasn't been said, the big one for me is the, is the communication, like figuring out a way to, to talk about these numbers. In a way that people can connect to.
Would like to add a couple of quick things. Again, I want to double down on the community engagement piece. Because when, when this came up in this particular packet, meaning engagement was one of the first things that I was thinking about, but at the same time, in the back of my head, I went, did they put enough in there?
No.
To do this? Because it's going to be, it's going to be super. The other thing from my, from my limited experience too, is that we as, as a council agree on how we're going to approach these departments and or how we, because I, I felt like this last go around. I would have appreciated the opportunity, if nothing else, that we have our, have our discussions and either we do it in a way that we're talking about the whole budget or we're talking about department breakdowns. Because of the fact that I think that I, I'm not sure that I felt in the last, and again, this is, I'm just speaking for myself personally, I felt like I wanted to take the approach of talking about each department. And then I think we got to a point where it was like, no, we're talking about that. And, and this is again, first year feeling out this process. And I kind of, I think we should structurally understand in, at the beginning of our discussion. When we get to the point, not in the early discussion of department heads in the room, I'm talking about when we get to the point where we've got our big binder and we're ready to, to talk about the budget, that we converse at first to how we're going to tackle. We're going to tackle the whole thing or we're going to tackle the department. So that again, structurally, we understand how we're going to have this back and forth.
Would you say that you would still have to do it department by department at least initially? I mean, I feel like
My, my feeling is I would want to, I'd want to go, because again, it was the nickel and diming process that we kind of went through. I'd like to do that at the beginning, do it department by department, and then we can start having, then hopefully we'll have the scenarios flushed out and we can, we can talk about it holistically over the whole thing. Yeah, I think it felt like me, it got a little derailed. Because I was attempting at one point to talk about departments and it got derailed into talking about something that I was hoping not to, you know, a road that I was hoping to go down. But then we were talking about the whole thing. So it got a little distracted.
Yeah. And I think based on everything that's been mentioned here, the one takeaway from what you just said is I don't want to get back to a point where we're nickel and diming. I think if we get back to a point where we, we're having that conversation, then all of this has failed. So, you know, I think, so that's.
I think the nickel and diming concept that we all got kind of fell into could be alleviated by what I suggested earlier, where each one of us is responsible for really understanding a budget, because then we could say, no, that's really, that's like, that's not a thing. Don't worry about it, right? And we could say it with confidence because we've been learning a lot about it. But yeah. I also think though the nickel and diming was a result of us not setting an expectation at the beginning.
Correct. And that was something that we should have done. Yeah. And we've kind of said two different things, right? We've said we should set, we should set an expectation right away. If we're ready to, and I don't know that that's the case, but I think let's get the, let's get the strategic plan results out and discussed. But very close to that, I think, well, hopefully by that point have an association contract. We'll have had this conversation on the strategic plan. One, at least. And then we can we'll have a better idea of what challenges we're facing. I will say, you know, just to bring up one thing that I didn't think went very well that I wish I did differently from the last go around was how we engaged on the library budget. And I will say that one thing we're doing right now is we're working closely with board leadership and the Brownell trustees to create a better dialogue and process and come up with ways to better understand our various roles and also engage on budget conversations and expectations right off of that, so that they're not operating in a vacuum. And what does that look like? Very much around what you said, you know, somebody will likely be a liaison to their budget process. So that those, that communication happens back and forth, so that, that process will go smoother. So that's, that's sort of underway now. One other thing that you said, I'd love to bring up. If all of this gets done the way we're talking about, I would really love to not have a full budget day. I don't know if that's possible. It's a Raj goal. It's a goal for future councillors. It's a huge ask to ask someone to take a day off. It's also a huge ask to ask staff to, you know, like there's, there's work all around that gets done around this and it's convenient by its nature, but I'm wondering if we go through some of this process, if there's a way to avoid that. I don't know that there is, but
I mean, the whole point of budget day was to avoid six budget nights, right? So if whatever we come up with here can streamline the process that we don't need one at all, we don't need the nights either, that would be ideal.
Yeah. And if, if we're incorporating some of that councillor liaison to department paradigm and early conversations and better expectations, then, yeah, I mean.
I think the hardest part I have with budget day is the fact that trying to think about the average resident who's needs to digest that whole thing. You know, whether they go back and watch, try to watch a video.
Well, it's not video. That day, we don't record that day.
We do.
Did we not?
We do.
It's available. We, we had it.
I can't remember. Did we have it on Zoom, but we didn't have Tom eating television?
Correct, as I recall, but you know, that's still a lot of content that somebody's going to have to go in and search through.
And very much introductory, like no decisions made, no, just introductions. And again, if we're doing this much earlier. So yeah, anyway, that's just something to think about. I mean, we don't have to do everything in the first year. You know, capacity.
Don't tell Tim that now.
The new guy is responsible to attend budget day for the rest of us. Regina, do you have any thoughts based on what you've heard or comments or anything like that?
No, just that I will say from the staff perspective, the budget day is helpful because it's not six budget nights as well, just the same. So. But this is all really great, helpful feedback. And thoughts right now is we maybe try to have this back on the agenda for June, the June meeting, so we can think through this further and flush this out. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So the next business item is an executive session. So I Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. Thank you, Amber. Is there anybody in the room that would like to comment or have any questions on this process, this topic? Is there anyone online that has any comments or questions about what we just discussed? Please raise your hand in Zoom. I'm not seeing anyone. Still not seeing anyone, so we will move on. Consent agenda.
Yeah. The next agenda item is not
Sorry, Chelsea. It was personal.
Well, as you're bringing that up, since there is a very clear and strong policy of interest, I'm going to go sit over there.
All right. But do come back later. Sorry, I apologize. Business item six C, discussion and consideration of service agreement with UVM for MS four compliance fellowship. And I'm sorry again, Chelsea.
And we were awarded the grant and went through the interview process and actually Andrew was selected. That's why he stepped away. But after asking for a legal review of the contract, our attorneys had indicated that need to be signed by city council and that the previous memo that I had given was only for the application. So I'm here again, asking for your signature so we can pay UVM so they can hire Andrew to do this work for the next year and see what efficiencies we could have in a regionalization of our MS four compliance measures.
Can you do a 90 second introduction into this program so that those listening can better understand what it's, what the goal is?
Sure. So through the state of Vermont, we have a whole slew of stormwater management compliance requirements ranging from education outreach all the way to inspecting infrastructure and designing projects and installing projects to reduce phosphorus in the lake. And there's 12 communities in Chinon County that are required to do this. And well, yeah, I'll keep it at that. And so right now we do it all on our own, except for the education outreach. We have a regional approach for that. So, and that's really resulted in some cost savings. So we're not all creating our own education program. We just pay some dues. And so several municipalities are starting to see ways that we think we probably could expand our regional effort in meeting somebody's compliance rather than each municipality doing, doing it on our own. And so we want someone to actually look at that and verify if they think that that's an option or stay the course that we're at. So that's what this project would be about.
Any questions, Marcus?
Just for my basic understanding, how will this either support or how does this play with the work that is going to go forth to create a stormwater utility?
Stormwater utility funds would fund a lot of the requirements that we have to meet. So this project could help find ways where we might be able to save money. And then four could help with the utility funds going further and so.
Support that this is not potentially as a regional effort going to replace our desire to create the stormwater utility.
No, we need the stormer utility regardless, because we wouldn't be able to regionalize all aspects of our requirements. So we still have with the MS four permit, we still have 25% that we need to reduce phosphorus from Essex Junction, City of Essex Junction municipal boundaries itself. So we cannot, that's something that we cannot regionalize and do as a, a, a multiple municipality effort. So we would have to have a utility just to help fund those capital investments that we need to make.
Elaine or Amber, any questions on this? No? I don't have any either. Thank you, Chelsea. Sounds like a great program. Congratulations, Andrew.
I'll move, we approve the service agreement with UVM and authorize the manager to sign it.
I'll second.
Great. Elaine moves and Marcus seconds. Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Chelsea.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Bit of departure from housing.
All right. I'll try to do this again. Get back to the top of the packet. I believe now we're on six D, which is an executive session.
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, Elaine and Marcus. All those in favor say aye. We lose Amber?
We're, I think we just lost.
That was just, it just happened if we did. She was just up there.
I can see her still in the meeting.
Yeah, everybody's on Zoom. We just lost our televisions in this room.
Okay. Amber, did you vote?
Unless, yeah, Tom eating TV is in. Audio just dropped out. Can't hear you. Harlan is saying.
Amber, are we back? Okay. I'm going to call that vote again. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Motion passed. Oh, you didn't hear that?
The consent agenda.
The consent agenda. So let's do that again.
That's cool.
Elaine, Elaine moved that we approve the consent agenda. Marcus seconded. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Thank you. Just want to make sure we got that right. Okay. Nice to have you back. Manager, report and member comments.
So, won't we start?
Yeah. Why don't we have Andrew start?
I'm not even taking that.
Okay. The Crescent Connector project has started up again. So there will be on Monday evening, we're expecting to do a water shut, shut off overnight. Those folks who are impacted by this will have gotten a flyer yesterday. So hopefully that will go pretty smoothly. Also regarding the Crescent Connector project, the way that you would normally get into Bailey Springs and Chassis, Architect Salvage, the number of businesses that are back there. You can't get in through the driveway on Maple Street anymore. So the entrance is off of Park Street. And those businesses are very much open. So please do support them. As Risa asked for and Harlan and Susan delivered, we have a new ballot box. It's over in front of the senior center entrance. So there is the second school budget vote on May 7th. You can vote in person at the usual polling place on May 7th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That's at the Blue Ribbon Pavilion at the Champlain Valley Expo. Ballots are not being mailed to everybody. So you can request an absentee ballot by emailing the clerks at essexjunction.org. I will just advise that this is a very short turnaround. So if you want to do that, I would do it promptly. And then in terms of returning the ballots, again, you can go on May 7th and vote that day or bring your ballot on May 7th or put it into, bring it into the clerk's office or put it in the ballot box through May 6th. I think I said all of that correctly.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I had a question and an announcement. So residents are asking about Cascade Park. There's a number of trees that are down behind the fence of the baseball field from that really bad windstorm we had ages ago. Some really big trees are down. They're not on the baseball field, but they're on the grass behind the fence. So just curious about whether they're being cleared away or, or not. And condition of the courts, when the nets are going to go up. I know Cascade is kind of a mess. And that it's almost past its useful life in terms of like, we can't just patch what's going on at Cascade anymore. So but folks are asking about when they'll be, when the courts will be ready and about the trees. And the other thing I wanted to mention is with Regina's blessing, there's Lori Houghton and I and Bridget Meyer have been talking about economic development and what it might look like in Essex Junction. And we want to harness some of that volunteer energy that we know is still out there since we became a city. So we wanted to start a conversation on what folks thought economic development might mean for Essex Junction. So we're going to have two community Zooms, one on May 16th and one on May 23rd in the evening. One of them will be with a woman named Heather Carrington, who is a professional community development specialist, and she currently works as a consultant for the city of Hard, the town of Hardwick, helping them apply for grant after grant after grant to take care of their downtown, to get funds for infrastructure improvements and all of the, the good things that have come as a result of that work together. The second one will be with her name just escaped me. She, Katie Troutz, she is the director of Montpelier Alive. And she is going to talk about what it's like to run a downtown organization and what it might look like, what it can do, what it doesn't do. Montpelier Alive has been around for decades and it is a extremely vibrant, very well-funded downtown organization. It's a downtown organization. It's a bit of an anomaly, but it is a beautiful example of what can be accomplished with a downtown organization. So those two Zooms will be open to the public and I will reach out to Ashley to start marketing them. And I'll be working with both speakers on some questions to ask them. It'll be sort of like a little mini panel and then open to Q and A from the audience. And everyone from Essex Junction is invited to hop on the Zoom with us. We'll have the details in the very near future.
Can you record them?
Oh, absolutely. We'll record them.
And maybe, you know, you probably talk about how people can get involved during that meeting, during those meetings.
Well, we don't have anything to get involved with yet, per se, you know.
Sounds like you're starting to move things around and get some decisions going and
Well, yes, I think these two, the purpose of these two Zooms will be to explore the possibilities. And then we have the strategic plan process that we've gone through. There's a, I'm pretty sure there's a pillar of economic development in there, but I haven't seen any results from that. So I want, I wanted to, like I said, harness that volunteer energy. Let folks know what's possible. And now that we'll, once we'll have our reporting about the strategic planning, we can start putting those pieces together. So I want to maintain volunteer interest at the moment. And then, yes, there will be decisions to be made and ideas to put forth.
Sounds amazing.
Yeah, it's gonna be great. I'm really looking forward to it. And I want to thank Lori Houghton and Bridget Meyer for helping to brainstorm how to get this conversation started because the staff is at capacity. And Chris is, Chris is gonna be on the call too and we just don't want to lose the momentum because we're trying and and be respectful of what the staff is trying to accomplish as well. We're all one big happy family.
Maybe an invite to the planning commission too.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Harland has his hand up and I suspect he may have potentially something to say about Cascade.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, so one of my amazing retired gentlemen who works for us part time, who maintains Cascade Park started this Monday with a mission of getting the pickleball courts cleaned up, which he started doing on Monday. Nets should be up by the end of the week. The weather is not being cooperative with us. I was down at Cascade Park today, as a matter of fact, with Public Works, who is a great team that supports us when they are able to about the trees that are down. The ground is too wet to get any equipment there. We can't get our pickup trucks close to them. We can't get the loaders close to them. We kind of need the ground to dry out and but it is definitely on the list to get those trees moved out. And early on, as we all know, pickleball is is very popular. I've received emails as far back as two months ago, asking what condition the courts were in, and I have been down and inspected them. The repairs that we made last year where we filled the cracks, there are a couple of areas that we are probably going to refill again this year because those courts are beyond their lifespan. And we're gonna try to maintain them the best we can. And in order to accomplish that, again, I need better weather. But believe me, it's high on the priority list.
Really appreciate that.
Thanks, Harland.
You're welcome.
Is that your phone?
Cookie alarm.
It's not a sound that I'm used to having coming from my phone. My apologies if that was mine.
Just remind me of Pac, yeah.
It's, yeah, I don't know what.
Is it you? Anywho. Want me to go now? I, sure.
Can I, before you do? I do want to say that on Monday I did receive as part of the strategic planning committee, I did receive preliminary results from the second survey on Monday. I have briefly looked over them so far. Obviously, I was preparing for this meeting, so I have deep, taken a deep dive into it. I assume and I, it hasn't been acknowledged yet, but I assume there will be a meeting coming up shortly with future IQ to go over those results and at least preliminary result, you know, the preliminary look at what they're going to be sharing with the council in totality. So I just wanted to acknowledge that the strategic plan is moving forward. The things you acknowledge that should come out of that. Yes, it's been acknowledged in there. You'll see some things come from that. On the initial look, the things that we've talked about already, kind of the direction we're heading. We seem to still be on track and we have alignment from what I see in the survey so far. But more to come on that. I don't know if Regina has any dates of when they're gonna.
I should in here somewhere. If I can find it quickly after Andrew is done, I can report it out.
And with that, Mr. Brown?
Yes, President Chala. I'm in a good place. Thank you. The, the resolution is far too kind. I've looked at my time here on the council, the trustees. Really as an honor and a privilege to have been able to be here to join this, this table with all of you, to have the community welcome me to this opportunity. I would like to think that that is not my work, but that is the work that I had been a part of because it isn't me alone. Sitting in that chair is not the, the fiefdom of all decisions that happen within the community and none of that could have happened without the support much more broadly from so many other volunteers, community members, supporters of the city, not of of myself. And so that's appreciative and I thank you all for that. When I think back to 12 years or so ago, I'm, my wife and son will shoot me when I say this. I'm reminded of a song that I will not sing.
He's gonna sing.
No, not at all. I'm not that person.
I've got Spotify.
But it, it reminds me of, of Green Day's Time of Your Life, of this was not predicted. I did not see myself being at this table. I have had the time of my life. I have a master's degree in public administration with a concentration in local government because I do enjoy local government. This is where I believe that things actually happen. Politics can get set aside and we can just get the work done. And that's what I believe this, this table, this body has truly represented and I'm thrilled to have been a part of it. I hope that I've added some humor to this, what can be a fairly dry, fairly boring event from time to time. Even though I've loved every bit of it. And I do admit that this is a very ambivalent moment for me is I love it, but it's time for me to go. And I know that I am leaving with the city in fantastic hands, both in terms of you all here, as well as our manager at the helm. I couldn't wish for a better scenario to be, to be leaving on. So I thank you all who have allowed me to be here and I'm not moving. I'll be around. I will say this chair is more comfortable than those chairs, though. So I think one of the first things I said at one of the first trustees meetings, I said, if we can continue to replace the chairs and upgrade them from time to time, that might help get more maybe put that in the budget. And yeah, I'll be back for height limits and other things. There's still plenty of to continue improving on. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you again, Andrew.
Thank you.
You got to do it.
I will, yeah.
I needed a minute.
Get out.
Okay, I did find the schedule, just to give you a quick rundown on the strategic planning. So as Marcus said, the second public engagement survey went out and so that is done and that those results are up on the website. There will be another survey that's intended to go to council committee members and staff to attempt to get to a little bit deeper level on, on actions. And then collectively, the plan is that the report will be brought forward to the council on May 22 at this point is what we're looking at.
Wonderful. All right, six D, executive session for discussion of a contract. I'll make the motions to keep this moving. I move the city council make the specific finding, the premature disclosure of the contractual matters would place the city a substantial disadvantage and I move the city council enter into executive session to discuss the contract pursuant to one VSA, section 313 A1A to include the city council and city manager.
This is, is this the MS four contract?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I didn't.
No.
Great.
No, but I think this is your opportunity, you know, second.
So move?
Okay.
Or did you?
Uh, no.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's Amber. Motion passes unanimously. I don't expect us to Sorry, I don't, no, sorry, I don't expect this. I don't expect us to return. We will adjourn from the executive session. No decisions will be made tonight. Thank you.
I was just finally like really paying attention.